Okay, for the record, we're gonna start the hearing scheduled for 6 o'clock on October 29th for the memorandum of the city. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir. Your name, sir?
Joe Ben Elizondo.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm Joe Ben Elizondo, and I'm here to speak on the ordinance 2019-5, adopting on the moratorium to suspend and accepting permits to mobile homes and manufactured homes within the city. Mobile homes are a major resource for millions of people, many of which satisfy national construction and safety standards similar to traditional housing. Despite these similarities and national safeguards, barriers against mobile homes are becoming more common. Mobile homes account for 8.6 million in this country, which is about 6.5% of the national housing inventory. According to the U.S. Bureau Census American Housing Survey for the United States, about half of all mobile homes are in rural areas. Consequently, the southern states have more than the national average. There is a significant cost advantage to manufactured homes. When structure, transport, installation, land, and development costs are included, one study found the total purchase price of a manufactured home might be as much as 75% less than the cost of a traditional home of comparable size and quality. Despite the cost advantage of a manufactured home as a source of affordable housing, one study found that oppressive ordinances by municipalities has a negative effect on affordable housing within the community. That negative effect is total exclusion from residential zones. Municipalities create these restrictions because of community and resident concerns about safety, quality, appearance, occupants', price appreciation, and the impact that these factors are supposed to have on neighboring property values. Courts upholding zoning barriers and the denial of residential use of mobile homes or manufactured homes often quote those objections as the basis for their decisions. Opposition to manufactured housing takes on the typical "not in my backyard" syndrome, with neighbors rising in opposition and putting pressure on municipalities, boards, and legislative bodies to deny approval or adapt restrictive ordinances. Studies show, however, either that there is no basis for these objections or that they are irrelevant to zoning regulation. As noted before, manufactured housing costs less than traditional housing, so the demographic characteristics of residents of mobile housing have lower incomes than the median average. Residents of manufactured homes also tend to be older or younger than residents of traditional housing, though there has been a rapid growth in minority occupancy in recent years. This data suggests that residents of manufactured homes are a respectable segment of the housing market. If lower income or age is the reason for opposition, a reduction or decrease in mobile homes would not be legitimate. Community members, mobile homes offer a lower financial barrier for family stability and offer a safe path for future home purchases. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Eddie Elizondo. I was just informed about, we're developers here, and I know a lot of y'all here also are familiar with the developing process. I wanted to, I hadn't been to any discussions as to what's going on or what's the proposal. I know y'all want to pretty much eliminate mobile homes from here on out in the, within the city limits. So I'm here pretty much to find out what's going on and see if something can change as far as the one, the reason. Could it be the code enforcement, the codes? Someone maybe not implementing the proper codes to, let's say, the mobile homes? Not necessarily eliminate the mobile homes, but as to how can this be better? What our target audience, I know, I don't know if I can ask questions, if I can ask you guys questions, but I know some of the developers here are representing the companies. What do you all target? What's your restriction on these neighborhoods? And most of y'all are, from what I know, I don't know about your neighborhoods, Mr. Salata, but it's pretty much peer foundations labs with minimal square footage on homes.
Yes, right.
Right? So what we target is, we're targeting the lower-income community, the less economically advantaged community where they can, in order for someone to come and buy one of your lots, either your owner financing them, but if they're gonna build, they're gonna have to go through a regular conventional mortgage to borrow against it unless they build it out of pocket. Okay? What we're offering is, most of our families that do buy from our communities don't have that opportunity to go to a bank. They don't have that opportunity to lend, to borrow 50, 100,000, whatever it is. We're giving them that opportunity to step away from not living in the projects, not living within the housing authority, even though they're beautiful facilities, but within their pride, they don't wanna, they don't wanna live under the government shadow. They'd rather go and cut grass, live in a little mobile home, and say that that's their property. Okay? By you taking this away, you're pretty much segregating, you know what? The less economically disadvantaged people, y'all need to move out. Sorry. Y'all need to move out and out into the country, and then out to the, to the farm areas and away from the city. Is that fair or is that equal to them? I don't think so.
It's not that we wanna take away from the city. I was just informed yesterday that, that wasn't what I thought, but it's not that way. I don't know if we can get somebody here to clarify this ordinance, but it's not that we, you can't. If you already have it, you can still put mobile homes on it.
Okay, if you already...
If you already have the subdivision, you can put mobile homes on it. You can still continue to put mobile homes on it.
Okay. But any new development?
I can sign up to speak with the city manager, but I could probably clarify a lot of the questions. If it helps, I can sign up to speak. It's up to the board.
I would rather you speak, Mr. Perez, 'cause I was like you yesterday, but as soon as I talked to him, I was, 'cause it's not, you know what? Ya no quiere ni una trailer en el pueblo. It's not that way, but he'll explain it in a bit.
Okay, and that's how I understood it, but of course, I haven't been involved, I haven't listened to, to any of these meetings or attended any of them, and I wanted to, I guess, get clarification. Before y'all make a decision, or maybe we can get some output from, or some input from people that currently have had that opportunity to purchase and grow, but yeah, it'd be great if you could clarify some things for us.
All right, as a member, I think it's important that either somebody from the city, or you, the city manager, Gilbert, at least during the public hearing represent what this ordinance is.
My name is Alberto Elizondo, city manager, and I appreciate, you know, the information you provided. It's not that we don't believe in mobile homeowners and that we don't support them, okay? What we're trying to do, obviously, if you've been around the city, we have no zoning, okay? So without any zoning, anybody can, and I'll give you several examples. We have several open lots in the downtown district, the historic district. Anybody can pull up a trailer, and there's nothing out there that's gonna restrict them or stop them from doing it, and they can be next to a very nice historic site. As you know, the city, you know, prides itself in having been a historical city, and so if you start mixing trailer homes with historic buildings and all that, you're gonna take that away from the attraction. And so all the intention behind this ordinance is not to stop and keep you from bringing mobile homes in, okay? What we're looking for is a moratorium to, if you have a trailer park, we welcome trailer homes in trailer parks. What we're trying to avoid, and I'll give you another example. We have a, we're about to kick off a groundbreaking on Monday on this new development across Ballmark. It's supposed to be, you know, the latest and greatest, you know, buildings and so on and so forth, and we're looking at attracting customers from the, not only from the area, but from outside the county to come and shop here in New York City. And there's about four, five, or six lots across the street. Nice homes, but there's empty lots. And right now, there's nothing stopping anybody that owns those lots from coming in and putting a 10 or 15-year-old mobile home. And so all we're trying to do is put some, something in place that will allow us to manage that a little better. So if you have an area that you already have mobile homes and they're accepted in that area, we're not saying you can't continue to do that. All we're asking is be considerate of these areas that don't have any mobile homes right now and keep that in mind. So if it's a historic district area, and we value that as a city because we attract actually people from up north to come in and visit the city because of that historic attraction, we wanna keep that going. And so if we have, and we value, by the way, the folks that live in trailer homes, they provide their own way and means, and they don't rely on the government, we concur with you on that. So we're not trying to detract you from going there and supporting that, and this is all we're asking for. So we wanna restrict the areas that don't have mobile homes right now, that are not feasible to have any mobile homes. Keep in mind, for example, if you were to own a $150,000 home and somebody has an empty lot next to that $150,000 or $200,000 home, and someone can pull in a trailer home next to your house, what is that gonna do to the value of your property when you try to sell? So that's all we're trying to do. We gain values and keep it, you know, on the up and up. Plus, not keep people out that belong, that have the ability to buy a mobile home and grow in a mobile home, okay? With all due respect. They bring value to the city and the economy. So we're not trying to diminish or minimize them by any means. Makes sense to you guys? Clear? Now, because we don't have zoning, we have no other way of telling any property owner, no, you can't put your mobile home there right now. There's nothing stopping anybody from pulling a mobile home anywhere in the city at this time. So you could have a very nice private neighborhood, and they sold a lot. Yes, there's some restrictions, but you're gonna probably end up in court. You could. And until we get zoning in place, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to answer questions back and forth because it's gonna be presented to you guys, obviously, to council tomorrow. But the intent behind this is not to keep mobile homes out, okay? That's all. We're just trying to limit it for the right reasons to maintain the property values. That's all. So if there's, if you like copies, you can, because the moratorium hasn't been presented to council after tomorrow, you can actually request public information and get an extra copy, and you'll see the intent in there. Okay?
Yes, sir?
Just to, just to ask the board, thank you for that information. It was really helpful. I'll probably request, it's, I was having a hard time finding a lot of the details to it. Again, thank you very much, and I forgot to thank you guys for letting us speak. More importantly, listening to us, 'cause we represent communities that are in the outskirts, right? And so with zoning, I know a lot of the growth, I grew up in suburban city about 18 years, and so I don't think it's happening this way. And I understand the importance of zoning as I'm a developer. And so if a lot of the zoning and restrictions and permitting, and the permitting is gonna happen in the Grove or Star County is happening, or suburban city is happening, the east and the west corners, you know, if that's the proper zoning and, you know, it allows us to still work within, maybe not necessarily the downtown, not the downtown district, maybe not those areas, but where we see Grove and it's that zoning, it'd be able to work just as well. But again, thank you for visiting and above all, hearing us. Yeah, thank you.
Eddie, it clear to you, sir?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it was, yeah, it's pretty clear, which is, I guess, it kind of puts, puts that ease, and I understand, so when you say there's no enforcement, or I don't remember the word that you said, as far as thinking more, as far as codes, as to the type of mobile homes that are going into, into that, that would be at the discretion of the city, go enforcement, I would think so, right?
After the, after the fact, once you finish all your subdivisions, if you wanna build new ones, then it will come through us.
But after what's going into these subdivisions, like any new subdivisions?
Exactly.
It would be...
You're gonna come from a different area and find one. They'll prove it here. If we're here, it's gonna be us. If we're not here, it's gonna be another member of the zoning, planning zoning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
We just have both of you gentlemen are the more than welcome questions. The city council meeting tomorrow, it will be presented to them and there will be a discussion. So you're more than welcome to attend, and hope it's all handled open at the beginning of the meeting.
For your information, we are a recommending board. The ultimate say-so would be city council, which their meeting will be tomorrow. We just recommend to them.
I adjourned the hearing and going to the actual...
Okay, we don't have anybody else. I'm gonna adjourn the hearing, and we're gonna go into the meeting, record at 6:28. We're gonna start the meeting. Do the call. Eddie Gonzalez?
Present.
This is Linda...
Debra Casas. Present.
Uh, I don't know if I'm presenting.
Antonio?
Antonio?
Present.
Present.
Sure, let's start there. We, we have a quorum. One of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three on the agenda is discussion and possible action to recommend approval for ordinance 2019, adopting the enticing and moratorium to suspend the acceptance of permits and approval necessary for mobile homes and manufactured homes within the Redland City, Texas, in accordance with Texas Local Government Code Chapter 212.
Mr. Chairman, this is, again, this proposed ordinance is to consider and/or act on the adoption of a temporary moratorium to suspend the acceptance of permits and approvals necessary for mobile homes and manufactured homes within the city of Redland City, Texas, in accordance with Texas Local Government Code Chapter 212. In order for the city to have adequate and reasonable time to review, evaluate, and revise the city's ordinance and zoning plan and their potential impact on development and redevelopment, the city desires to implement a moratorium period for 365 days. This proposed moratorium suspends the acceptance of permits, authorizations, and approvals necessary for subdivisions, site planning of property development or construction of mobile homes or manufactured homes within the city of Redland City. However, property owner might request waiver to the temporary moratorium by submitting a written application to the city with the reasons for the waiver along with the supporting documentation. The request must be submitted to at least five business days before, but not more than 10 days before a regularly scheduled planning and zoning commission meeting. Planning and zoning might recommend to the city commission either approval or denial of the waiver application if on or more of the following conditions are met. Undue hardship, the tract is subject to a written development agreement with the city. In other words, subdivisions submitted individually. And pending projects, complete application for one or more permits that weren't filed with the city before the moratorium becomes effective. On section four of this proposed ordinance, there's a list for the undue hardship. The, in the subdivision case, the tract is subject to a written development agreement with the city. In other words, subdivisions will still be presented to the city, but they would have to specify the use and obviously recommended by, from PNC to city council. And of course, pending projects, in other words, rest of the land that was previously developed as is. But like our city administrator said, mostly the target is to the original townsite areas where basically we have no notice at this point to deny a permit, where, again, you have, you have a historic building. Nowadays, we just issue a permit for an 8,000 square feet home, and then there is no, if there is no subdivision restrictions, basically they're entitled for, to apply for permits, as it is. In this case, they can still apply. Doesn't mean, obviously, they're gonna be able to get any permits.
Okay. Let's say I go to Alvarez Road, and there's no, I buy a lot over there. This is not the townsite here, and I applied to put a mobile home there with this ordinance. Could I put a mobile home over there?
They would have to apply to planning and zoning.
That's why. Okay.
That's why it's here in individual cases.
They will, they will be given the opportunity to do it. Okay.
Yeah, but each case would have to go through planning and zoning before, and then obviously ratified by city council.
Yes.
How would it affect older subdivisions already established? They would have to apply?
Again, same process.
The same process, but if there's already mobile homes in that, it's gonna be up to us to decide, yes?
Correct.
No. If there's already mobile homes, they can still finish what they have, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Let's say like, like, in a neighborhood, there's homes in one street, and then behind them, there's a mobile home, and maybe the rest are homes, or maybe on one street, there's maybe one or two mobile homes, and, but maybe the lot next to me is empty, and they wanna put a mobile home there. But I wouldn't, I personally would not want that, but...
Unlike the complete subdivision, which is basically all the lots, this would be on a case-by-case basis, application to PNC. In other words, that would be individually absurd.
But this is within the city limits?
Yes, only within the city limits.
Even though the subdivision has a regulation that accept mobile homes, they still need to come in here and ask for a permit? Not those.
Well, like I said, on all the cases, like if it's a trailer park, it will be allowed automatically. The rest will be on a case-by-case basis, apply to planning and zoning.
Okay, because I know, I think there's a subdivision that allows mobile homes. I think it's like, maybe one of the DOINOS or something like things. I think I've done paperwork, or I've done something that I remember that I read the restrictions on the deed. I don't know, I think, and it said that, I know that they say they can't put a bar or that type of thing. It's on the deed, but it says that a mobile home is allowed. Would those be on a case-by-case basis also, even though it's on the, I'm just asking?
Yes, and that's a, that's a good question. Let us remember that the restrictions are not enforceable by the city, court enforcement staff. These are obviously civil contracts between developers and the end user. However, in this case, it would be a one-on-one application to planning and zoning, saying, do you accept a mobile home in this one lot?
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to...
What criteria are you gonna be using, like, for denying or accepting the permit?
You give that to us?
Again, you might wanna look into the restrictions there, so we have a lot of things to consider. Obviously, building codes, there's a lot of suggestions to the planning and zoning board.
Gilbert, going back to the, to the actual, the agenda, it says that, what's the difference between a mobile home and a manufactured home?
Mobile home, what it says, like the name says, is, it's a rolling, it's a trailer house, basically. Manufactured home could be a wood-framed home.
So it's both?
Yes, but it's more the mobile homes, basically on wheels.
And going to the next statement there, it says, in accordance with Texas Local Government Code Chapter 212, what section?
Yes, sir. See, for attorneys, but... Who'd have to find out what legal the exact section?
All right, obviously, Chapter 212 is the whole thing about, you know, the city's ability to regulate subdivisions, but I mean, I wonder what specific section says that. And only because we're a board and we're a recommending board, we're gonna recommend to the city council, and of course, I mean, we don't want any liability coming back on ourselves. I mean, I think there's a lot of, there's still a lot of questions that, that need to be answered and moving forward and something like this. You know, you can, and talk about what's the difference between mobile home and a manufactured home, and talk about what the specific section says that we have the authority to approve that. And going back to, to what the, I guess, the, the conditions would be to approach, even to come to approach us to ask for a variance or, I guess, a permit. You know, so you have the undue hardship. Well, going back to the waiver, it says that they would have to come before the fifth day and not after or not before the 10th day to the next regular meeting. I mean, that's a hardship in itself for somebody to come out here and figure out when our meetings are and figure out when are the 10 days. I mean, I think if we could remove that and just, you know, if they came in and applied and the next, the next meeting would be available for us to hear that. You know, I'd, I'd like to see that changed. The second thing there is, the tract is subject to a written development agreement within, with the city. So obviously, there are no written development agreements within any subdivision within the city, because most of the, most of the subdivisions were done before 1994, before the city was even incorporated. So, I mean, that to me is telling me that a subdivision that has come to us after incorporation and has said, this is a mobile home park, which I don't know many, but I mean, we wouldn't have a written development agreement on, let's say, like the Elizondo's development out, out over there behind the old, the old water plant or the water office. You know, and they're a new development, but I don't think y'all would have an agreement with the city that said you could put mobile homes. I mean, I think that's just between them and their, their customer, and they can build a home if they want to on your subdivision, but they can also put a mobile home. And, and I think a lot of people start off... And, and I think a lot of people start off with mobile homes, it's, it's affordable housing. Uh, you know, I kinda thought about that when I was thinking about this whole deal, is do we have enough affordable housing within the city to say, well, you can't have a mobile home, but we've got this other affordable housing for you guys? I mean, I, it, I think it's early, I mean, not, I don't think we're at the point to where all this this is to be done today, and tomorrow there's a city council meeting. I would like to have more time to look at this and actually hear about what the, what the whole intent of the moratorium is. Uh, you know, there's a couple of things that I just, I, I, I could be with it, because I understand what the mechanism is going to be for. But, uh, I think there's certain things in there that, you know, if we approve it, I mean, we might have some liability to, as the fact that, you know, we're saying that no mobile home and no manufactured home is allowed in this, in the city limits. And even if you came for a permit, I mean, it, it's saying here that you would have had to have had, you would have to prove a hardship. You know, some people just prefer to live in a mobile home, so maybe you can't prove that hardship. And then the second one is that the tract of land, you know, being the Elizondo's property, or any other subdivision that doesn't have restrictions, or have, I guess they have restrictions, but minimal restrictions, uh, that they would have had a written agreement with the city. And I, and I don't think that there had been enough planning for that. So that, that second statement in itself would, would kinda keep us from approving anything, you know? Uh, it didn't matter whether it was next to the commercial development, or in the downtown area, or out in, you know, back, you know, subdivisions were, you know, it really wouldn't matter. There's already others, there's already other trailer homes there that'll probably be there for the next twenty to thirty years or more. You know, and, uh, you know, we're gonna say no to, to these that we know what the intent is for. But we're also gonna have to say no to those, because these statements are kinda gonna force us to do that. You know, so I'd like to see some of this stuff cleared up, and I think maybe legal should have looked at this a little bit closer. And we should have a little bit more answers to, as to what exactly we're approving tonight.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, with that being said, uh, do you have a motion for approval? Motion dies for lack of... Nobody moves. Okay, uh, I guess you know what happened here, right? The motion died, dies, as, right now, uh, I don't know if Dennis wants to make another motion as to, you wanna have legal come and give us a workshop or something?
You know, I'd, I'd like to set up a workshop, and maybe even with the city. You know, I know what the intent is, uh, there's just certain things that before, as acting as a board member of this board, that I could, you know, put myself out there and say, okay, I'm, I'll, I'll take some of this responsibility or liability on this. But, uh, you know, I, I, I think there's just a couple of things that in here that we could tweak, and, and come back, and maybe, maybe approve something that'll work for, for everybody. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I know two personal friends that, that lived in mobile homes. They're the best friends of mine, or good friends of mine. And, uh, and for me to come back and say, well, nobody would need to have that kind of upbringing, or living, or, or starting off, uh, you know, would be hypocritical of me to do. So, uh, I'd like to move forward with it, uh, with a little bit better language and an understanding of what the mechanism is. And so I'm gonna prove, I'm gonna make a motion to see if we could set up a, a meeting and, uh, not approve it at this time, but maybe table it for another meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion to table it and see if we can, uh, make a workshop. Uh, to have a couple of things tweaked on the ordinance and have legal, uh, fix the, uh, the wording on it. I have a motion, I have a second, I was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same time? Uh, motion, correct. Now, it could be, con nosotros nomás, y luego recommend. Cause...
Yeah.
Cause it's still gonna go through city council tomorrow. Okay, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna set up a meeting next week, and then we can come back and do a workshop in conjunction with an actual meeting.
We'll have.
And get something approved right away, but...
Just let us know, and, and we'll be back then, uh...
I have other curiosity, when did y'all get a copy of this work? For this, I mean, moratorium?
I got it on Friday, I believe.
I got it on Friday.
On Friday?
It's the Friday, please.
I got it on Friday, didn't really look at it, I did talk to, to Gilbert on Friday about it. Once I started looking into it, I, I mean, I just had questions.
Yeah, I...
Is that gonna brought you the attorney?
I got it on Friday, but I was making, I'm, I think I, I didn't call your cell, but I called your office, and I was put on hold for a while, and then, I mean, I can't be on hold, but I called just for clarification.
Sure.
And, um...
Yeah, I have a problem with the information I gave to you sooner, because that's important for you to make the decision that, you know, based on what you apologize for.
And we tried to talk about it before, but we, neither of us had clarification on it, and, and we tried, um, and then, uh, I, I think I called Melissa, or I called it, I don't know, Melissa, I don't, Melissa didn't answer, but someone else did, and they put me on hold, and I just, I couldn't get past that, so I...
Full set up.
Yeah, I mean, we can do it as soon as possible, I mean, we can do it next week, we'll do it next week. And set up the meeting in conjunction with the workshop, maybe thirty minutes or an hour later, get it done.
Okay, uh, Mr. Elizondo's, uh, the item was tabled. Uh, that means, uh, we're gonna have no action on this item as of today. They're gonna table it tomorrow too, so you don't have to come. We're gonna have a workshop, and we're gonna try to tweak it a little bit as to where it's not gonna affect where there's already mobile homes. So, so as of right now, everything's on hold, and other, in other words, it's on hold. So, we'll let you guys know when, when the next meeting's gonna be. If you wa, also wanna, gonna come and, and, uh, and hear what, what changes was made to the ordinance, you're welcome to come. But as of right now, the, the item was tabled. Fine? Okay, anything further? Okay, meeting adjourned, six forty-eight.